We hope she'll be patient with us and please, you know, be patient with her. She's learning her way through the Building Department. So, and tonight we have Bob Vogel here. Neil is not here tonight. He's at another meeting. So, Bob, you want to read the first application?
First application, Susan A. Pippin Trust, Kim Stewart, and Maureen Hurley, co-trustees of 10 new Driftway Suite 202, Situate. Request a special permit under Section 610.2.2B, the Situate zoning bylaws, to permit the creation of two 50-foot frontage lots at 35 Dreamwald Road in Situate, Mass.
Okay. Mr. Morris?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Gregory Morris, a registered engineer with Morris Engineering, representing the Susan A. Pippin Trust. With me are co-trustees Kim Stewart and attorney Maureen Hurley in the front row. What we're here for is we're here to divide number 35 Dreamwald Road into two new 50-foot frontage lots. I'll start by showing you the plan and outlining the existing site. The existing site property line is shown in bold. It's improved by an existing house, number 35. That house is accessed off of Dreamwald Road. Dreamwald Road is a public road with a 40-foot wide layout on the top of the plant. It's abutted by residentially zoned and developed properties around it entirely. It's located in the R2 zoning district, which requires a minimum of 20,000 square feet lot size. There is a small wetland at the northern corner of the lot. See the delineation here? The remainder of the lot is upland area. The lot as it exists today is 4.95 acres. The proposed layout, which is depicted on this plan, is subdivided the lot into four lots. This would be approved through an A and R, or an approval not required process, with the planning board. However, prior to filing with the planning board, we're seeking the special permit from you in accordance with Section 610.2B for lots one and lot three. Specifically, that requirement is that a lot is allowed to be granted a special permit and a house to be constructed on the lot if it has a minimum of 50 feet of frontage on a public road and contains a minimum of two times the minimum lot size. Lot one complies with the frontage. It has 50.5 feet of frontage, and its lot size is 40,197 square feet. It is entirely upland area. Lot three complies with the frontage. It proposes a distance of 75.08 along Dreamwald Road, and the lot size itself is 67,000 square feet. Of that, 61,800 is upland area, so greatly exceeding the 40,000 square foot requirement by law. We would ask for a special permit to be granted for lots one and three as depicted on this plan.
Now, did you get the email from?
Where is that?
I think it's Pat. Is that Pat Galvin from Conservation?
I did.
And he seems to say that has been determined by a representative of the property owner, not the Conservation Commission. I've never seen the Conservation come in and make a determination of the upland. Is that?
There-
Maybe I've missed it.
I don't think this board has required that in the past. There certainly is a process that if you had a wetland line that was questionable, you could file it with Conservation and get a determination on it, whether or not it was accurate. In this case here, this wetland line is out in the field. It's very definable. I don't question that it would move. When Conservation reviews the application for construction of the lot, for lot three, lot three is the only one we're talking about that has wetlands on it, Conservation at that point in time would have jurisdiction to look at that line. And what I would say is I would say lot three is, as I said, an upland area, is 61,800 square feet. So, that line would have to move an awful lot.
Yeah.
It was delineated by a professional wetland scientist. We didn't go the route of having Conservation delineate the line at this point. It will be done.
Do they sign off on that, on the plan somewhere, or you just have a report?
They sign off prior to a building permit. Not prior.
The wetland specialist I'm talking about?
They give a report to us.
Okay.
That's where the, your stamp is assuring that you have evidence to support what you're representing on the plan.
It's actually note seven on the plan.
Oh, vital matter. Yeah, okay. Okay. All right. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Frank?
No. Just a clarification. Lot four, because it's showing it will have somewhere 110.41 feet in length, but you're not looking for any relief there. And lot two will be created, lot two as it will be created will have 101.7. So, both of those are not on the table because they comply with zoning.
Correct.
Just one quick, lot three, does the access from Dreamwald, so that we cross the wetlands to get to there?
More realistically, we'll be doing a common driveway for lots two, three, and four together. You could access off Dreamwald with a wetland alteration, but most likely, we're going to be doing a common driveway. And we've reserved that easement on the plan.
And you'll do that with planning board?
Yeah. That's a separate permit, planning board. Correct.
Anthony?
Nothing.
Okay. Does anybody from the audience have questions?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just set the ground rules. If you would give your name and address, so that can be recorded, and then just try to speak as, so everybody can hear you.
To the board.
Nancy Crower, 46 Dreamwald Road. I wish the gentleman, he was standing in front of the picture when he gave the illustration to you, and that's fine, but it was not possible for us to see it, and the audience, at least for me, to see it. So, I wish you'd do that again.
Yeah. Do you mind doing a real quick little review?
Not at all.
Stepping on the other side, then?
I apologize. It's hard to go two directions sometimes. So, the plan here, Dreamwald Road is up at the top of this plan. The Pippin property is the bold line here. It's approximately 580 size. The existing house is right here. The proposal is to divide this property into four individual lots. Lot one, lot two, lot three, and lot four. We're here tonight for lots one and lot three, asking for relief with respect to the frontage requirements on Dreamwald Road. The town has a requirement that zoning for this district, you have to have a minimum of 100 feet of measurement along the road and a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. These lots all greatly exceed 20,000 square feet. They're almost all 40,000 square feet or 50,000 square feet size. Lots one and three are filing under a section of the bylaw that allows you to have 50 feet of frontage along the road, as long as the remainder of the lot has two times the land area. That's minimal for zoning this way. So, two times the land area is 40,000. Lot one has 40,197 square feet. Lot three has 67,000 square feet.
Yes, ma'am.
So, again, Nancy Crower, 46 Dreamwald Road, you're not asking about lot four at this point?
No. They'll have to go before Planning Board for that.
Okay.
Well, lot four is a given.
They still have to get approved by Planning Board.
A and R. It's an A and R process through the plan.
Oh, okay. Okay. There you go. Shows you how much I know on planning board.
For clarification, the plan that's presented, those two lots that have 100-foot of frontage could be as small as 20,000 square feet, allowing additional manipulations of lot lines. At least my observation is the applicant has been pretty thoughtful to create, under the bylaw, it's required to create a large estate lot in order to get the relief that they're seeking of 50-foot frontage. But they're creating four large, what I would refer to as estate lots, all over an acre. Lot four, because of the wetlands, doesn't have, only has 38,000 square feet of uplands, but it's still a 55,000-square-foot lot. So, these are large parcels, and the density being proposed by the applicant is far less than would be allowed if the existing house were taken down and it was developed as 20,000 square-foot lots. So, is that fair?
Good assessment.
Yes, ma'am.
And if we allow this, there's no further subdivision?
That's right.
Either. It's forever.
Martha Detunian, 25 Dreamwald Road, two houses down from that residence. I've been there for many years, and there's been a lot of problems. And I'll shoot us down there. At the bottom of Susan's lot is a pond. Kids skate there, and it still exists there. And at the top, my driveway, getting to where we moved in, there was a pond, too. And when I moved there, only two houses were allowed in that whole area. And now we have eight other houses. And I'm concerned, again, about the water. I have a civil engineer's report at that time about how it drains and everything, and there are not many drains in that area. That's my foremost concern. I don't know if it will directly affect me, but I know it runs off to the other neighbors across the street. And many years ago, everyone in the neighborhood don't water, that didn't even get water. So, that is my major concern. The other major concern is a very narrow driveway. We have, since there were only two vehicles at the time, when I moved in, there probably are about 12 additional vehicles, including there will be even more than that. And everybody has somebody, some FedEx coming down and everything, and it's four times applied to the town to get signs up or to consider moving, dividing the road there. Because now you're getting a host of young children who go, hi, you run out, and they're young. That's what they're supposed to do. And so, the safety matter and the liability for the town in a case like that, I can't, that's only my imagination, and perhaps I shouldn't be concerned about it, but I am as a concerned citizen. So, those were the issues that I really raised regarding any building, and that's all I have to say.
Okay.
I don't know if this is the proper time to direct these questions or concerns, but I thought I'd raise them immediately.
Well, our job tonight is to decide whether or not they get to do the lot. Okay? There are other bylaws in place and building codes in place with respect to like runoff. Okay? They're going to have to comply with, actually, I'm not sure, will they have to comply with stormwater runoff? It depends on how big it is, but you want to tell her about that, stormwater?
Sure. So, the town of Situate does have a stormwater bylaw. So, when the development happens and the new houses are constructed, we will have to provide calculations to the town, and they're reviewed either by the Conservation Commission or the Planning Board prior to a building permit. And we have to document that after construction, we're not going to be increasing the rates or the volumes of runoff off of the site. So, right now, the site is a wooded site, for example, on lot four. Once we put a house and a driveway there, we will mitigate that increase in volume through the use of dry wells for the roof, for example, or swales or rain gardens, and we'll use those devices when we do the individual lot designs to mitigate the stormwater.
So, it will absolutely be addressed, and they'll have to show, they'll have to show that they're going to be able to take care of that. So, you should not have any runoff from there. And the street situation, you know, I don't know what you do with that, maybe the selectmen or the people, because we don't get to say anything about the site. We can't, we have no power to change the street.
I didn't know what was happening. I just raised my concerns.
Right.
And to have the notification.
It's not uncommon for a public way in town to be laid out as a 40-foot way, 40-foot wide, but not be paved the full amount of that way. That's very common in town, and I appreciate you're talking about Dreamwald as it goes back.
It is paved.
I understand.
It's narrow.
But it's paved narrowly, and as you say, it was originally serviced-
For two houses?
Many fewer lots than it does today. And that may be something that others may look at, but it's not, it's not the applicant's responsibility to improve it.
I'm sorry. I'm kind of like-
It would be if it was a private way, if it didn't, if they were trying to create the way, we could then ask them to or require them to. But here, there, it is a public way, and they have a right to use the public way and have access to their property on the public way without being responsible to improve it.
Sure.
Kevin Pennington, 156 Grant.
We've been expecting you. He sent a letter. Okay, so.
Ranch Street, my lot abuts the lot three. My concerns are, first of all, with the water running off, what direction it's going to go. In addition to that, through the storms over the past few years, there's been a lot of damage to trees in the area. There's been a couple of, well, there's been one major tree that's fallen over, taken out of our fence, and a few other trees that fell over and leaned into our fence and caused damage to our property. So, I'm concerned about, A, how they're going to take down the trees, to what extent they're going to take down the trees. And my assumption is they will be putting up landscape to create some kind of a privacy barrier, but there's nothing in the plan so far, and I don't know at what point that comes into play.
Well, a lot of your concerns, I think, are really just, it's the right of any property owner in any town to make those decisions as they go. They have the right to leave the trees up, and they have the right to cut them all down, you know, as long as they're not within wetlands. So-
Keith, can I, there is a history of the previous owner not cooperating with me to take care of damaged trees. They fell into my property, at which point they were my responsibility. I paid to have them removed, and she reported me to the police and accused me of cutting down her tree.
Well, you know-
So, the reason I'm bringing that up now is there's lots of trees very close to the product, and I want to make sure that they don't fall over as well.
And, you know, there's actually really nothing we can do. You know, we always encourage applicants to be good neighbors to the people that they're developing the property next to. So, you know, to meet, you know, seek to meet with people, you know, nobody wants, nobody wants problems with their trees destroying other people's property. Sometimes it's an insurance issue. That's why, that's why we have homeowners insurance, and, you know, it can be kind of a mess, I know, but hopefully it gets worked out. I know some of your other concerns were issues about, you know, building close to property lines. They have to comply with all the setbacks under the Situate bylaws. So, they don't get to move any closer, you know, than the law allows them, and-
At what point would that be made public?
When they seek a building plan. It's not even, it's, oh, no, the new houses aren't there. The building envelope is there, okay, and you can see, but they'll have to file building plans, and Neil or Bob will make sure that they have it, and I'm sure they won't do it. We've yet to see it. Nobody puts, nobody puts a house, a new house into the setback. So, you know, it looks like a nice area. I'm sure they're not going to be interested in having it, you know?
By way of clarification, the setbacks are drawn on the plan. They're the-
They are. I didn't see it. I saw the plan earlier.
It says building envelope, and there's little, the little dotted lines on the-
The light hash mark. If you want to come up and take a look at it, you can take a look.
Yeah.
It also indicates, you'll see on the lot, it says 125-foot width.
So, I see a very large area. That's much larger than a home would be.
No, but he can build anywhere within that area. And the, but that, he can't build any closer to the property lines than those areas. So, situating it on the lot has to do with what kind of building would be there, whether it, you know, what's the topography, if there's ledge in the area, or other things that might come in. But what we're doing tonight is to create a lot or allow them to create a lot, which they can't build anywhere other than within that area. So, you know at least the limitations of where it could be.
Okay. One other thing, earlier, they talked about something related to the Conservation Committee that was specific to lot three. I didn't quite follow that.
Well, it's the location of the wetlands is determined by the wetland scientist. We have to make sure that there are, there's double the wet, uplands, rather, in order to allow them to build. They can't, they can't come in, and they're not going to be allowed to build on 5%, if 95% of the property is wetlands. And so, there's some, some very specific rules regarding that, and they've had that determined, and I'm not sure, do you, do you have to go to Conservation?
It will have to go to Conservation prior to construction.
Okay. So, they will also be presenting an application in front of Conservation for Conservation permits.
Can I ask a general question of the gentleman? Is there a timeframe in mind for when you expect to start building?
Well, first of all, we just, we require it to go through the board. I know that's really, it's not so typical, but, you know, I have no idea. They're not required to say that. I mean, you have a lot of issues, you have to, other permits to get, I don't know if you have any timeframe?
No timeframe for beginning construction, no.
Okay.
I think it's, I think it's important to note, the application before us is by the current owners of the property, which is a trust, and the, at least would be my impression, the trust is not looking to become a builder. So, they will probably, once they know what they have to market, is that they will market it to someone later who will seek to do something with the property.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate it.
And, you know, someone might come in and say, I love the property as it exists, as much as it's attractive to consider it this way, I want us to keep it just the way it is, and they could proceed that way. I don't think the trust has any current knowledge as to what might come forward if this plan is approved. This changes what's being sold or what's being, what's owned by the trust.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir.
Madam Chairwoman, board members, thanks for the recognition. My name is Timothy Shine, 5 Orchard Road. If I may ask, engineer, could you delineate where the existing driveway is of Mrs. Pippin's property? It's just difficult to kind of put things in perspective, looking at the lots the way they are now.
The existing driveway is right here. Comes up this way. This is her existing house right in that location.
And where's the wetland cutoff?
This is the wetland line, this dash dot line here, and it makes up the front triangle of the property.
And that's been delineated by an engineer or conservationist that your folks have hired?
A professional wetland scientist that's licensed.
That you folks hired?
Yes.
Okay. But no independent body has reviewed that?
Yeah, and that's not required? I mean, they have to, they have to, they're professional licenses, you know?
True. Pursuant to 131, Section 40, can't build with regard to if there are cattails, if there are skunk cabbage, other things in that area. And I've lived there for 44 years.
Right.
I can tell you that that line might be a little bit gray. So, maybe it might be something to bring up to Conservation. May not be the time now, but-
Yeah, we don't bring it up to Conservation.
I understand.
I mean, Conservation, if they're concerned about it, will, can do whatever they do. I don't know if they, you know, they go out and look at it themselves, they can make onsite, I mean, yeah, onsite review of it themselves.
I certainly understand that. I just want to bring to the board's attention, as Mrs. Detunian brought, there was a pond there. It was the old bossy property. You know, we used to skate there, turtles there, skunk cabbage. Mrs. Pippin was more of a private lady, and we respected her. She didn't want us skating there, you know, as we got older, fine. And it had grown in to a large degree, but when I was growing up, that was as wet as wet could be. So, today might not be the place to bring it up, but I just wanted to make you all aware.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Bob, do you have any comments?
No, not really, Sarah. I know that Laura Harbottle, the town planner, reviewed this briefly today, and with the changes that have been made, I don't believe she had any comments. And certainly, the Building Department at this time doesn't, doesn't have anything to comment on. It's pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any further discussion by the board? Do we have a motion?
I have another question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Yes.
My next gentleman went to the side. He didn't, he didn't delineate the new driveway, and Mr. Shine mentioned the old driveway, so I asked if you would just move to the side and show me where the new driveway to access the three lots is proposed.
There is no new driveway yet. They have to go through another permitting process for that.
So, when he said that, that was just-
Well, he's given you the general idea of where they anticipate it, but the, they will have to get a special, they'll have to get a permit from the Planning Board for the driveway.
But is it anticipated that you go back to the old driveway and then to the third lot, more or less?
You can inspect, there's the easements on it.
What we, what we anticipate is using the existing curb cut and the existing driveway coming in about 50 feet off of Dreamwald Road until you're onto the lots, and then breaking off to lots three and four. It will be a shared driveway for lots two, three, and four. It'll require a full review by the Planning Board and a separate permit. I haven't delineated its physical location on this plan. I've given the general layout because I've provided an easement area, but-
And the first, and the lot number one would access the access down to Dreamwald itself?
Its own separate driveway on Dreamwald. Correct.
Okay. Yes.
Hi. My name is Maureen Hurley, and I'm one of the co-trustees with Kim Stewart. And as you know, this is Susan's trust, and Susan has requested that we do this, and the trust will fund two charities in Situate, the proceeds of which are going to go to the Situate Community Christmas and the Situate Animal Shelter. And we did meet with Greg Morris, and we looked at whether to try to do a subdivision on the property, or to try to minimize it, just do four small, that's, there's actually a lot already there, which is Susan's. Do three small lots plus hers, and we determined that this was the best way to go and the most respectful to the neighborhood. So, I just wanted to point that out, that we did consider a subdivision, because it is a 20,000-square-foot area. Could have gotten a lot more lots, but it would have been a lot more work for everybody. It probably would have created a lot more havoc in the neighborhood, and I think this is the better way to go.
Well, it sounds like a good way to honor her and for, a good way for her to honor the town, so, not that she gets any special considerations. She, the permit process is the same, but it's appreciated, I know. Did you have something else, Mr. Pennick? Oh, you're just scratching your head or something. Okay.
Can I just, clarification?
Yes.
I'd just like to, having listened to what the, the audience has said, one of the things that the applicant presented to us at the very beginning was that lot three, because a portion of it is wetlands, it has been delineated, and we have to accept what it says here on the plan, obviously, that can be disputed and reconsidered by others. But as currently delineated, it's 61,000, 61,800 feet, square feet of uplands. So, you'd have to come up with another 20,000 square feet or a half acre of additional wetlands to make this lot, you know, inappropriate for our bylaw. So, that's, voting this this evening, clearly, if what's represented on the plan is a half acre wrong, it will, it would reflect poorly on both Environmental Consulting and Restoration LLC and Mr. Morris. So, I, that's, that's a huge amount of discrepancy. A few feet or a few thousand square feet is one thing, but 21,000 square feet is a lot.
A lot of gray area.
That's, that's pretty gray.
So.
Off by the footprint of about four houses, big houses.
Yeah. All right, so do we have a motion?
You looking at me?
I am, Frank.
Aye. Move to approve the request of the Susan Piven Trust for a special permit to create 50-foot lots on lots 1 and 3, to put on the plan of Morse Engineering dated December 30th, 2014.
Sir, I think there's an updated plan. I think it's January 15th.
It's revised, as revised, January 15th.
Oh, yeah, as revised, January 15th, 2015. Second.
All in favor?
I didn't.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as you were, as a matter of course, there's, there's going to be a restriction for further, against further subdivision.
Greg, the, the plan has to have on it?
Yeah.
We used to, it used to be argued that it should say further divided.
Yeah.
And I don't know the terminology.
No, I'm with you, I, I agree.
Yeah, maybe I'll give you an address.
That would be great, up to you. Yeah, that would be fine. I just wanted to see, my husband, husband had a meeting.
Okay, why don't you...
It's Nancy Collins, is my name.
You can also come by my office and see a big one if you want, too, okay? I'm on, you know what?
Collins, C-O-L-L. I'm right here, this is...
Can you guys take it outside, so we can move on? Thank you. And you know what, I've decided, just so we keep ourselves in order, I'm going to tell you when that's going to be absolutely due. 90 days is April 14th.
I think I can get it done by then.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I think we've all been doing a really good job on that. 14, 15, Buschieri. Okay. Thank you. Bob, do you want, do you want to read on the second application? We'll just vote on that continuance.
Happy to do that. Second application, Kenton L. Bunkerzone of 17 Gates Circle, Situate. Request a variance in accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 10, from Section 520.4 of the Situate Zoning Bylaw requiring a 150-foot, no disturber buffer zone from a tributary to allow construction of a single-family dwelling at 5 Williamsburg Lane in Situate, Mass.
Okay, and we received a letter from the applicant today requesting a continuance. They have been in front of the, I can't find it here, they've been in front of the Board of Health and are waiting, and I don't know, they don't have a decision from the Board of Health, so they asked for a continuance till next month. So we can vote on that?
Motion to continue the application?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the date of next conference meeting?
19, you said?
February?
2/19. I won't be here February 19th, probably.
Okay.
I may not be at school occasionally.
That is a vacation week, isn't it? Not that I'm going to be on vacation.
I'm never on vacation.
I'm always on vacation.
I mean, I'll make an attempt to be here, but I'm...
Sure, no.
It's one of the advantages of being a teacher.
All right, so then we got the third application.
Third application. Continued from December 18th, 2014. Request for the zoning board of appeals to review changes with regard to the comprehensive permit issued on January 16th, 2003, to Stockbridge 2 Realty Trust. The project is located at 90 Stockbridge Road, Assessor's Map 054, Block 2, Parcel 27.
Okay. That, again, we do have another request for continuance on that, and, there we go. I'm not going to read it, it's too long. Oh, that's, no, that's not, that's John, he's still here. Yeah, he's still here. So I, I guess they've just, I don't know what the deal is on that. I think they're still, I don't know if they're still working out details, or somebody can't be here?
The last I knew, John was still in discussion, and I think Pat Gallivan also, about some of the details of the retention basins and, and other things.
John Chesia from...
John Chesia, yes, consulting engineer for the town. I think they're very close, but evidently not 100 percent.
Okay, all right, so...
Move to continue the application of Stockbridge 2 Realty Trust until our next scheduled meeting, February 19th, 2015. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving right along.
Request for modification. Walden Woods LLC requests a finding that locating a triplex unit, units 6, 7, and 8...
Paul, could you just shut the door? Continued.
Okay. Request for modification. Walden Woods LLC requests a finding that locating a triplex unit, units 6, 7, and 8, 10 feet closer to an adjoining duplex, units 5 and 6, on the approved site plan, is not a substantial change. The project is located off of Stenbeck Place, Assessor's Map 45, Block 16, Parcel 30.
You're up.
Hello? My, uh, the engineering of the placement of the buildings, versus what was on the plan, showed that, showed that the plans looked, looked wider than they are. Based on the engineer's actual layout to Ross Engineering, they've given, they've put the stakes, and we noticed that it seemed a little bit closer than what it showed on the render. So we just here for clarification from the board that it is what it says it is per the plan in front of you, and that, that where it is. There was plenty of setback from the existing building, which is 14 feet, where some of the other buildings are only 10 feet apart.
Now, is I, and I understand you can't move the property to, I don't know what direction we're going, closer to the drain line because of drainage issues or something?
Right, by the drainage. We've already hugged it with the other two in the building, which is unit number nine and 10, excuse me, 10 and 11, then 12, 13, and 14.
So that's going to put the corner of building with units 5 and 6, 14.9 feet from the adjacent building, right?
Correct, from the garage, garage to garage.
Okay. And, and it's my understanding, under 40B, what we have to do is decide whether or not this is a substantial change? And if it is not, we don't have to do anything, it just goes through?
Just a, oh, sorry.
And if it is, then...
Have to have another hearing?
Yeah, we got another hearing.
Just to clarify, there's no increase in the square footage of any of the buildings?
No, they're...
They're all remaining the same.
Yes, they are, as they were originally proposed.
Location itself, is what you're asking.
As per the drainage that goes into the detention basin down back. We moved the building as close as we could to the right, and find that we're 14 feet from garage to garage. But from the garage jugs back in 12 feet, so from dwelling to dwelling, it's a good 60 feet apart.
And what was the original proposed distance between the two?
It really, it was never on any of the plans, that it showed what they were set apart from those two buildings.
It wasn't, it wasn't measured.
Correct.
It had a distance put together, there wasn't a...
It was more of a visual, you showed a building here and a building here versus...
How do you know it's 10 feet closer then?
Correct.
Good question.
I'm sorry?
How do you know it's 10 feet closer if there was never any, 10 feet closer than what?
When, now that the, the engineers have come and put the stakes in...
Yeah.
For the layout of the foundation, you can visually see, there's the building, there's the garage, and the new garage is 14 feet away. So we're 14 feet from the corner of the garage to the corner of the garage of the next building, is how we know. The next two buildings are only 10 feet apart, which is 11 and, which is 10 and 11.
So what you're saying is you thought they were all going to be the same, they were all going to be the same distance apart?
No, I, one of my clients had raised the issue, that she had come in and talked to Neil Duggan, said that it seems like the building's a little closer than what it should have been. So therefore, what we did was, I had the engineer stake the stakes, and therefore to show exactly where it is. And Madam Chairwoman did come out and take a look and saw...
Actually, I haven't seen it.
Oh, yeah, sure.
I'm just confused about the what it should have been, what that number is.
It would have been, I don't know which one would have been, this space would have been wider.
I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what happened is when the drain line went in...
Yes.
It somewhat restricted the building area. The drain line went in because of topography.
Correct.
When it went in, it's a little bit to the right of where it might have been intended to be.
Yes.
As a result, the building's space here was constricted by about 10 feet.
That's exactly right.
So that it's 10 feet closer. They would have liked to have had the building over here, but because of the retention basin and the drain and the topography and everything, it had to be shifted slightly.
Yes.
So the as-built will show it about 10 feet different than the proposed plan.
Correct.
So it did have a...
So it's going to be 14.9 rather than 24.9, is that?
That would be, it's a yes.
Do you think that's substantial?
I don't know, in, I don't know, how do you measure substantial? I mean, in terms of just that dimension, yeah.
Yeah.
But in terms of, do you measure substantial by the overall project?
By the project.
Especially if you haven't added the square footage, the lot size is the same, the original density increase, I think...
Also, if I, if I may, we're all on, there's no setback issues, we're on our own acreage, 4.8 acres.
Yep.
So we've not encroached on any sideline requirements or anything. So if you look at all of the buildings, you can plainly see that they are, the next two that we just poured are 10 feet apart.
I think also, as far as the closest to the building, is still sufficient amount of weight, distance from each other that...
And I think if, it's not being present, it's not being presented as this case to us here, but were the applicant to come in and say, "We found a piece of ledge we didn't know was there. We need to relocate the building or suffer a tremendous cost of blasting," or something like that, we'd look at it and say, "Well, that's fine." I mean, I, I see this as being kind of the same thing.
Yes.
It's not like we're increasing a specific point of relief that was given in the past.
Right.
Well, you're, you're shrinking the space that this, the people in these who have lived in these units...
Right, but I guess the mitig, the mitigating circumstance on that is it's garage to garage. So it's not, you know, you're not mushing people's... Well, she does have a deck there, yeah. But it's, it's, it's a one-story garage?
Yes, it is, it's a one-story garage.
Garage, and the deck is elevated, so it's, it's, I actually went out and looked at it, and I didn't think it looked too bad, because I was concerned about, you know, you look on it and you kind of go, ooh. And I guess Mr. Maraca has spoke to the owner of that unit and offered to do, you know, I mean, we can't legislate it.
Said we do plantings, said we do a, an ovity, I would build a trellis, because it's a bedroom window in this unit that overlooks, I would build a trellis with rose bushes on it, that could be maintained, so therefore, it costs, you know, whatever we take to, we've done very well up there, I mean, as far as taking care of the neighbors and doing a good job, so...
So unit 5 and 6, are they both currently occupied?
Unit 6 is, 5 is not.
All right, so you're going to be marketing unit 5 with full understanding of what the new building...
Absolutely.
...looks like?
The building's going to be started excavated next week, so therefore...
If the applicant in unit 6 feels that it was, it was misrepresented, or the change is detrimental to her, that's something that you and, you and the applicant...
We've talked, we've been talking together, see them every day, and she, she has said, that's why that I'm here this evening, and said, "Listen, we understand and we know what's going on," so...
I'd move to find that the, the proposed relocation of the triplex for unit 7, 8, and 9 is not a substantial change to the, to the plan.
Second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody in the audience wish to be heard? Hearing none? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
So it's my understanding that if we do that, we don't do anything. It just, we don't have to do any writing, it just...
Right, it's on record, it's on record that it's been heard.
But we don't have to make an order or anything else.
Right, Mr. Duggan had expressed that, too, and said also that, as long as it was heard before the board, then it would be a normal issue.
It's looking good, you, you guys should go out and take a look, it's, it's actually...
I've been up there.
Yeah, it's nice.
Looked to have you.
Oh, and, and I guess for the...
Should we come through Tillen Road, or through...
Both.
Okay.
Tillen or Stenbeck Place.
Well, they say the front of one of the houses and Tillen Road, the front one.
Yeah, we're also doing 38, that, we bought the old house, the house that, yeah, we rebuilt that, so.
So I also want to let the community know that four qualified buyers, we have heard from the monitoring agent already, four qualified buyers were approved in 2014 under the 40, affordable housing. Two new owners have moved in, and so, what's the, how many total?
Seven affordables, all are sold.
All are sold now?
All are sold. We have a passing on February 7th for our third, and the other four, the purchases and sales are coming out next week.
Excellent.
And we also have, of those four, we also have five more retail sold, so we're almost at 50 percent.
Well, Brian, you get to see it come to fruition at last, huh?
I thought it would never happen.
Brian had a full head of hair when this started.
I'm still holding my breath for Stockbridge Woods.
Yeah, well, hopefully, if it doesn't stop getting continued. Very good, congratulations.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year, great to see you again. Bye-bye.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next.
Request for extension. Gerald M. Connell, trustee of Elizabeth J. Connell and James J. Connell Family Trust, collectively the Connells, who are the owners of Great Rock Island off Glades Road, Situate, Mass, request a six-month extension of a variance from frontage requirements granted to them by the ZBA, March 20th, 2014.
Mr. DeLeese?
Yes, Jeff DeLeese, Orenberger, DeLeese &amp; Harris.
Oh, my gosh.
I know, it's kind of new.
Yeah, it was totally new.
I think that was the first, that was the first letter I wrote.
You know, it's funny, because I, oh, then we're going to keep this.
Yeah. Frame it, frame it.
Congratulations, to Mr. DeLeese there.
Why don't you talk, Billy? Was there a wrestling match?
Because then it would have said, "Doe."
That's right. Would not have been good.
So, yeah, the Cannells were granted this variance in March of 2014.
And they're back already?
The decision was filed in April of 2014, and in an abundance of caution, we're still, we're still on, the property is still listed for sale, and with the winter months looming ahead of us, we think it's a good idea to seek the six-month extension and get it in a seasonable time prior to, to the deadline.
Is it a, was it a one year?
It's one year.
Okay.
Is six months sufficient?
One year.
No, six months is all they can have.
That's all you can do at a time?
Six months is statutorily...
Okay.
Yeah. I actually, I thought the same thing, and I re-looked it up.
Could it, could you come back in later and ask for an additional six months?
I don't think so.
Statutorily?
I don't think so.
So we'd have to go back and re-vote it if it was...
You got it.
Yeah, there's a ques, yeah, yeah, true.
Not to exceed six months.
If we seek, if we seek an extension, we could seek an extension that does not total more than six months. And I would think that if the permit expires, then we would have to come in and reapply.
That's what, that's how I read the statute.
So, when was the decision, April, do you have that date?
April, April 10th, 2014 is when it was filed. I'm not certain, the statute was unclear to me as to whether the extension would be from the date of the grant of the variance to the date of the filing of the decision, or the date of recording of the decision.
It does say date of, if they're not exercised within one year of the date of the grant.
Would the grant refer to a vote?
Yeah, the vote date.
Yeah, I think, I think it's the meeting.
File.
Yeah, and that's why, that's why I'm here in January, as opposed to.
Right, instead of March, yeah. So I think we can give you six months from.
March?
March.
What was the date in March then?
20th, March 20th.
20th?
March 20th, yeah.
So that's be September 20th, if we, if we go sick of it?
No, so they have a year from March 2014, right?
No.
Six months.
Six months more.
And then, and then you tack on six months, then March 20th.
2015.
Right.
To. To exercise rights under the variance.
Does anybody in the audience wish to be heard? You can't pick up that there's nobody in the audience, can you?
What would be?
Well, Brian, I'm sorry.
What in, just in a general sense, what would be considered exercising the variance?
I haven't gone through a detailed analysis on that.
We grant so few variances, that's why.
Yeah.
I mean, this place was absolutely unique, but.
My, my, the way I look at this is, you have to look probably at the nature of the variance in order to determine whether, whether you've exercised your rights in it. So if it's a setback variance, then obviously, when, you know, I guess when you commence the process of doing the setback. This is a frontage variance, so it's a question in my mind, actually, as to whether or not.
Building permit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know yet, and it's probably a call for Neil.
Yeah.
So you could extend the building.
Well, that's the thing, but the building permit, at least from what I think you said, is you're looking for a buyer for the property who will develop it, not the current owner, so.
Yeah, that's the plan.
The idea is you'd like to have someone else pull the building permit who intends to actually do the development.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I, I'm not certain that it would be a building permit, you know, because the lot is the lot in my, in my estimation, but, you know, once, once it's on a plan.
I mean, I actually was looking at something on this today, on what it means to exercise rights with respect to another issue, somewhat related, but not this one exactly, and it did seem to say, you pull your building permit and you, you just get going, you start on something. But if you let the building permit lapse, then you're, you're a problem, too.
Yeah, so, you know, I think that I need to sit down and have a clear conversation with the zoning enforcement officer on that and get probably his opinion and make sure.
They do what they need to do to.
Yeah, because no one wants to be in the situation where we come back and.
Well, that's probably the easiest variance, I think, in the end, we've ever granted. You got an island.
Oh, it's an island, right?
Yeah.
We don't grant variances.
I know.
We're not supposed to say that.
Well, they just don't happen, they're.
Four at all.
The level of burden is so high.
Listen, I got to tell you guys, I, I was in the town of Hingham on a variance, a frontage variance question, which they granted, and there were seven other variance applications on the agenda that evening.
Wow.
And at least half of them were granted.
You're kidding?
I swear to God. I was stunned, because I understand, you know, I do most of my work here, and I know, I know.
Threshold is high.
Yeah, but it's not as uncommon in other, well, at least that other town.
Is the code more stringent?
Well, the, the fact, the variance factors are the same.
Right, but, but does the code create a situation where there's more reason to give a variance?
No, because, well, in that, in that circumstance, in the frontage, it was actually more, it was, it was a more difficult, it was a more difficult definition of the, of the word frontage, but most of the variances that were requested, it's not, it's not common for a frontage variance.
Right.
But most of the front, the variances that were granted were setbacks, were setbacks, and setback, or setbacks of the structure itself, or additions that were proposed to beyond the structures, and they were allowing them.
Within the setback?
Couldn't that be a, couldn't that be a Section 6 finding? Is the board just misapplying the law?
With respect to what?
The Hingham ZBA, with respect to somebody seeking a setback, quote, variance, chances are if it's an existing dwelling, it would be a Section 6 finding.
I think he's saying people are building additions into the setback.
Right, so if you have.
Still a little in section.
Dwelling that was conforming to the bylaw, and then you were seeking to not conform with the bylaw, you would need variance, right?
Right.
But we've done that at Section 6 findings, that it's not substantially detrimental.
But you have to, you have to have, that's assuming.
Already in the system.
That's its pre-existing.
Or structure.
If you have a complying home and then it.
You make it non-compliant. Then they just shouldn't be doing it. I mean, that's, Section 10 is all about, there should be.
I was really surprised, but.
They're just so.
Yeah.
Well, I was thinking it might also be some of the, some of the topography in Hingham makes it very difficult to develop, and I can understand it if it's, but if it's an existing dwelling and they're doing an addition and creating a non-conformity, that's.
I understand what you're saying, Mr. Tibbetts. I question whether anyone in Hingham is under substantial hardship.
Nah.
What would we do with the new music world?
So you're saying if one of us wanted to move to Hingham, they wouldn't necessarily open, welcome us with open arms, knowing how. I'm not going to. I'm the guy who does the business entirely, so.
I'm sure they're all very, that would be very, very acceptable.
I'm sure they, I'm sure they address the challenges of their town in the best way they can under the law.
Did we make a motion on this?
We did not. Does anybody care to make a motion?
Motion to grant the six-month extension of the variance, extending the time limit to September 20th, 2015.
Seconded.
Well, yes, whatever the date is, six months from March 20th.
We said September 20th, 2015.
Perhaps the terminology that's listed is that six months from the.
For the granting.
Date of the granting of the variance.
Right.
That was our meeting.
Extending to September 20th, 2015.
2015.
AD.
AD.
Anodymene.
I'll be happy to draft.
Well, we haven't even granted it yet.
If, if, if it's granted.
Do we have a second?
Yeah, I seconded it.
Oh, you did? Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. DeLisi, you may, you may write it.
On your new letterhead.
On your new letterhead.
Yes, please.
Bring in those billable hours. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, you know what, we have to move to push these rules and regs out. It, I tried to hook up with Nicole before she left, and she was so busy.
Is this a six-month extension?
A six-month extension on rules and regs.
Is that enough? Should we make it a year?
Right, right, I think we need to. I'd like to actually extend it until March. I know I'm not getting to it next month.
Well, it looks like next month's meeting, we've already got two continuances, and